Apologize if anybody's online, we're getting started fifteen minutes late. But let's call the meeting to order and get started with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a rather lengthy agenda tonight. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, there are. I'll go ahead. If anybody else wanted it. Yes, there is a change the agenda for propane usage. And do you want me to wait until we get to the agenda or do we read them now?
Yeah, why don't we get to the, if we're going to add them to the consent agenda, let's revisit it when we come to the consent agenda and we can maybe discuss them a bit.
And there are transfer requests for student services.
All right, we'll revisit that in a minute. But first, I'll open up the floor to the first session of public comments. You don't have any members of the public here in person, so see if nobody's online. Give it another thirty seconds here, but I guess we'll be prepared to move to, I didn't know before, the superintendent's report.
Great, I'll keep it fairly brief tonight, but there are some good things happening there in the works. One, you may have read in the paper already, I think it was in last week's paper or the week before, maybe at the, two Thursdays ago, that the select board at, in Jaffrey has, is supporting the forward movement of a, an after-school program, a joint effort between the school, the town, actually several other community organizations as well. I think that once we get this all ironed out, we'll be able to share quite a coalition of individuals and groups who are willing to and want to, I think this is very exciting, really want to and know that it is needed to help support the children of this town here, but also the families of this town as well. And we know that an after-school programming certainly has benefits from a research standpoint when it comes to child development. But we also know that families, knowing that their kids are taken care of in a, in a quality situation, are able to also feel better when they're at work and be able to sometimes even go and work a couple hours of overtime, which can significantly add money or income to the family and support their well-being broader from just the school system itself. And of course, it's, there's a cycle of, of care that's involved there. So we're excited about that. We're also excited about the continued conversations. We still need to button this up, but conversations with our bus company about providing late buses this year to learners in Jaffrey and in Ringe. Doing both of these efforts without taxpayer implications, meaning we, that was the select board's charge to John Frederick and to us, to let's find a way to make sure this is sustainable right from the beginning and that we're not going to be going to the voters to have this funded. The same thing with the late buses, but we are seeking to, I would say, move runs around in order to free up some, some bus routes that are already within the budget so that we can utilize them in a way that we have never been able to before and provide services to kids that need that after-school, both for our proactive measures that we'll hear about tonight of clubs and activities, but also for some measures of helping support kids who need some more direction due to behaviors as well, or even maybe some extra learning that needs to take place. So that's very exciting. The schools, Ringe Memorial School, Jaffrey Grade School, and the Conan Middle High School, all are working on their literacy initiatives. We've talked a lot about that. I especially want to shout out to the elementary literacy team, mostly comprised of teachers, but also administrators as part of that, who are doing some great work to be able to help lead that effort to make sure that we have a really successful first year within quite, quite a, quite a, quite a, quite a reading initiative that we're going to be doing. I'm very excited about this. And I think it will also have implications for other subject matters, perhaps sooner than later, but definitely later on. And that's my report for tonight.
Thank you, Ruben. Any questions?
Just a comment. You've been busy this summer and thanks for keeping this moving.
Yeah. At some point, we'll talk about CTE, but we had a couple of good community meetings with career technical educations and, but I think that we should save it for a detail, you know, to have a detailed conversation about it another day.
Can I just ask a quick question on that? Did you get any response from the state on funding?
No, but we, not anything that we could use concretely. We, we might be having someone come and, and look at our site from the State Department, but still, to their point, the people making the decisions on funding and we're up against obviously other CTE locations, but also a men's prison is what I understand in the state of New Hampshire too. So there's other building projects that we're going to be competing for funds with. So the, we'll see who gets elected in December or comes on board in December to make those decisions from the legislation. But we have, I can say that we have proactively with community input scaled back the project. The one that is still very exciting and would add a lot of value to the region and to the school and, and programs.
Any other questions or comments for Ruben? Now, I agree that the, the CTE subject probably deserves its own section at some point, and I think we'll be talking about it. You know, probably at every meeting going forward from September onward, I think, in order to, in order to progress it, we're gonna, we're gonna have to be talking about it here and.
We're gonna be talking about it a lot, a lot, yeah.
So for tonight, anything else for the superintendent? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. A lot on there, the manifests, budget transfer, a number of nominations, transfer resignations, superintendents and directors, new contracts, the donation and the snipin' list, and Lisa, you have two other items to add?
I do, I have a, see, I think we're a total of eight transfers. Eight transfers. Could I ask somebody to put up their computer and make a total for us to have for the record?
Okay, let me get a calculator.
Thank you. These are student service transfers, transferring from, unclear to unclear, all students' services funds, it's not, okay. Transferring from one tuition line to other, to outside tuition lines in general. But all under this, all budgeted under the student services line item. Should we have a total?
Oh, I haven't put the total in.
Did somebody tell you?
I can do that. So you'll laugh. For some reason, I thought you were just gonna go through and I was just gonna type in the numbers. It's my fault. I'll total it up.
You have the paper in front of you.
You have the paper in front of me, which is why it's funny. Or, or not funny, or not funny.
That'll be the next one. So while they're counting. We have another agenda item or another addition to the agenda for Curadelli, whatever, propane fixed price agreement. In July twenty twenty four, the Jaffrey Ringe Public School District entered into a propane price agreement with Curadelli Fuel Company Inc. Curadelli is able to lock us in for a dollar forty-four per gallon for the fiscal year twenty twenty five. And Sandy's recommending to the board, the board authorized the district to lock in propane rates at a dollar forty-four per gallon for the, for the one-year period commencing July first, twenty twenty four, June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and authorize Supernette and Dunkin' to execute the twenty twenty five fixed price agreement for propane heating of the house.
And the total amount of transfer funds within the student services accounts is, as long as calculator and I punched everything in properly, five hundred eighty-four thousand, one hundred fifty dollars.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Sandy. Would anybody like to discuss any of the items on tonight's consent agenda?
May I point out just one thing? It's just that Ray, Ray Martin, he says nominations to maintenance and groundskeeper. So first of all, we're very excited that that is the case. He was already an employee, so he's moving from one position to another. So it is both an internal transfer as well as a new hire for him. And so we're excited for him and the work that he's doing around the entire district now.
And I would like to thank Millipore for the donation to the robotics and maker club.
Also, in that same vein as Raymond Martin, Jessica Sharon is the new school counseling administrative assistant upstairs, and she's doing that. Had a couple of conversations with her. She's doing a great job, but she's been a paraprofessional in the district. So moving from one location to another. So again, both an internal transfer and a nomination.
Anybody else have any questions or comments regarding an item on the consent agenda?
I guess I just wanted to clarify that Pauline Dean's position as the SAU out of district and charter school coordinator, that's a, a new position, right? And I know that was requested, and I, I remember hearing how many meetings there were with, between our special ed and the charter schools.
Over one hundred.
Over one hundred last year, so I'm.
One eighth of total meetings, yeah.
Sure that this position is, is going to be a very busy one.
Christine, anybody else have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, we've had a motion and a second, so all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as modified with the budget transfer and addition of the propane fixed price agreement, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed and abstentions, so that passes six to zero to zero. And we will move on to school board minutes. I'm guessing to, to, is it easier just to do these one by one?
I think so.
Rather than look to see who's on each one of them? Right, everyone can be responsible for figuring out which ones they should approve. So we're gonna start with the school board public minutes from seven fifteen, twenty twenty four. Someone make a motion.
I hope we accept minutes as printed.
Thank you, Sandy. Second?
No, I can't. Sorry, I started to.
Lisa.
Second, second, I can't.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the school board public minutes from seven fifteen, twenty twenty four, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed and abstentions.
Abstain.
Abstain.
So that's four to zero to two. Moving on to the non-public school board minutes from May twentieth, twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion to accept the non-public minutes for five, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, John. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the non-public minutes from May twentieth, twenty twenty four, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
All those opposed, abstentions. Is everybody one, six, zero to zero? Next item, non-public school board minutes from June third, twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for June third, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Lisa. I'll second. Thank you, John. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor of approving the non-public minutes from June third, twenty twenty four, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
Right. All those opposing abstaining, so we have five to zero to one.
I'll make a motion to accept the, do we have any more? That's all of them?
No, one more.
But it's the second non-public, same evening.
I'll make a motion to accept June twenty fourth's minutes, non-public.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Sandy. All those in favor of approving the non-public minutes from June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed, abstentions, now one passes six to zero to zero. It's great, yeah. All of those now approved, and we can move on to the three waivers, facility fee waivers.
Make a motion to accept the request to waive facility fees for the Ringe Rec Department karate class, Jaffrey Cub Scouts PAC meetings and Jaffrey Cub Scouts STEM meetings. One second.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Christine. Any discussion? Charlie. I know we're gonna have the MOU this month.
We've got minutes.
All right, so yes, to move on to the MOU. Any other questions or discussion on the request to waive facility fees for karate and the Cub Scouts? If not, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approval, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Abstentions. That passes six to zero to zero. All right, moving right along to the action items. The first action item is the acceptance of a foreign exchange student. Materials are in the agenda, but I don't know who we're we hand that over, we'll be talking about this.
So we have just making sure that we're gonna second, second one, yeah, yeah. Okay, so we have an individual who is from a reputable company or working with a reputable company who has a Ringe host family and would very much, they would very much like him to be able to come here and attend our school. I'm not sure if there's any other information that we would have on this particular individual.
I knew that he comes very highly recommended by the organization. He's got really good application material. We obviously like to have exchange students as often as we possibly can. It definitely enriches our school environment. It's love interacting, getting to know different cultures. So I was excited when this person reached out from this organization. It's not one that we have with a decent memory, but it is very reputable and maybe would be the right opportunity here.
Think so. Sophomore.
Thank you, Ruben. Thank you, David. Any questions regarding this application? Sounds like a good thing. I agree. Okay, can we get a motion on this? I'll make a motion except for an exchange student. Thank you, Charlie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Christine. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the foreign exchange student application, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed and abstentions. Great. The next action item is authorize signatories for RMS activity account.
Make a motion to accept the authorized signers change to the activity account for RMS.
Lisa.
Second that.
Thank you, Christine.
So I have a question that, is the, is this account under the SAU's IEN number? Because if it is, the treasurer has to have custody of that.
What's the question?
So if this is an account that uses the SAU's IEN number, their tax ID number, the treasurer has to have custody of that. These people can't be signers. The treasurer has to have custody of that.
Well, I don't know the answer to your question, other than the fact that we've been doing this process for student activities and student activities is, tends to be separate from other accounts.
And the, the auditors are okay with that?
This is what they would ask us to do. Yeah, so we've done this year after year.
Okay.
But I, I don't have the exact answer. I'd have to ask Carrie about that.
Yeah, because according to RSA one ninety-seven dash twenty-three, under the duties, the treasurer, the school district treasurer is to have custody. Of course, I know that because I was the treasurer for the school district at one time.
Did you oversee the student activities accounts?
Yes.
Okay.
And the school lunch program. I ran this books for the school lunch program too.
Wow.
Yeah. So I mean, if there's a change and the auditors are okay with that, then that's fine, but that, that's not what it says.
Verify that.
Yeah, we should. I mean, it's a good question. We should verify it. I know that as a principal, I always had myself and another individual sign it. You wanted to have a couple of different eyes on it and see if it would be very difficult for one treasurer to go to all the schools and be able to, you know, work with those accounts. But we do have redundancy built into our system. But again, I want to find out your answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
We wanna table this and address it at the next meeting. It's appropriate.
I think you could pass it.
We could pass it pending.
With.
Yeah, I mean, if it's always been done and it's okay to be done, then continue on.
Pending confirmation from the treasurer, from the.
Business office. Yeah, business office.
Well, the business office is the one who presented it.
Yes.
See if it presented it. So there just seems to be confirmation there.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. So I think we have a motion and a second, right? So all those in favor of approving the changes to the authorized signers on the RMS student activity bank account, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions. That passes six to zero to zero as well. Next item on action items is the CMHS certificate of completion addition to the program of studies.
So this is just in addition to the program of studies or being asked to put that into the program of studies. I think it, it's relatively self-explanatory, but it's providing an official alternative certificate. So a certificate of attendance by the state of New Hampshire. If an individual who has learning needs completes their time here, certain requirements at Conan Middle High School, but does not meet all the state requirements for graduation. Like, for instance, maybe Algebra One, which is a state requirement, maybe an individual wouldn't be able to pass that class, but they still can be recognized for their learning and time here at CMHS. I don't know if anyone else has anything else to say.
So this, there is a current school board policy IKF that contains the language from that first paragraph. And this, kind of to Ruben's point, we didn't have any implementation language in our program of studies to, to utilize this. And we have at least a couple of learners in the last few years who were very likely be completing individual education goals, but not completing graduation requirements. So it's becoming more timely that we add this kind of implementation language to our program studies. We, we're not anticipating that this would be more than one or two learners, you know, every few years they give them that.
Have we done this in the past? We're just making it clear in the program of studies now, or?
Yeah, I mean, probably seven years ago, eight years ago, we had all these tiers of diploma. And a lot of them was what we used to call a transition diploma. That language is, is kind of dated, so that was scrapped. And this was just never replaced with this, this updated IKF policy. So it's something that we worked on over the summer to get the language really firm. And obviously, if the board accepts it as the program of studies this year, it will just then continue in our board's draft.
Thank you. Anybody on the board have any questions or comments regarding this item? Does not appear so. Can I get a motion? In that case.
I'll make a motion to accept the CMH, CMHS certificate of completion addition to the program of studies.
Thank you, Christine.
Second.
Thank you, John. Any further questions? Seeing not, oh, Charlie, no, just crashed. I jumped the gun, saw something out on my periphery. All those in favor of approving the CMHS certificate of completion addition to the program of studies, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed and abstentions, that passes six to zero to zero as well. All right, you'll be kind of rapidly through this, but
Oh, it gets slower.
You get something, maybe some of the meatier items towards the end. I know we have a bit to discuss here. Charlie and I have been involved in, in some of this work with the administration team, but we'll move to the co-curricular stipends.
After the co-curricular stipends, would the board chair entertain, at least going to the communication devices, second reading? I don't, because to go and approve the handbooks, we had discussed wanting to make sure that that policy was in place prior to talking about the handbooks, the, about.
My understanding is the handbook currently has some language that would.
It does, but I, let's say the board said, no, we want a completely different, you know, policy. I just didn't know if the order was better to go through the policy first and then the handbooks. Up to you.
I, I think there's enough, we have, we have quite a few policies that have to do with the handbooks tonight, so we can just go back and forth.
Okay, great, thank you. Salary structure of the stipends for activities and athletics. All of them are really activities. Athletics is a subset of activities, but the basically coaching advisors, so clubs and athletics. You have, I believe, a paper copy of both of those. I have up on the screen the ability to go and toggle back and forth. But before we do that, we'll go to the payment description, co-curricular stipends. You can read that, but I will give Heather Lindstad an opportunity to speak to this. Question would, are they able are they able to be picked up? I know that, yeah, David has talked a couple of times, but I just want to make sure that it's picking up on the screen. Okay. So if you'd like to have the microphone, that'd be great.
Can you just explain, Ruben, briefly? I know this, but maybe for the people that go back and watch, just the reason why we we're doing this right now?
Yes. So the for nine years, the co-curricular stipends has been within the JREA contract. So that would be the Teachers Association contract. Nine years ago, they put a new matrix in that had been developed by a committee that matrix gave different types of dollar amounts to different level of clubs, if you want to call it that, a level, meaning how many individuals are in your club, how many individuals are playing athletics? How many times do you meet in that? That environment? How many matches do you play or games do you play? All of that was spelled out. And so different groups, coaches, you know, for instance, a varsity coach might make a base of $3,000. Someone doing a club would have a different factor. Maybe they would, you know, work half that amount, and so they'd get $1,500. What we didn't do is we never updated the language or the amounts for the past nine years in the co-curricular agreement. So earlier this year, when the contract was negotiated again with the school board and knowing that we did have data that suggested that we were behind other area schools and schools throughout the state within many of our coaching in particular, possibly some some other areas as well, but definitely in the athletic coaching that we were behind by thirty-three percent, twenty-five percent, fifty percent, sometimes other places around in the area and in Division three. We knew that we or we wanted to. The reason why we removed it from the contract was so that we would be able to more we would be more able to update that when when it was fit to do so. So that's why we're bringing it here. We had a joint committee. That committee was spelled out in the JREA school board contract. And that committee has met a couple of times to discuss what some changes could be. And I would say that the summary of changes would be that there's some more definition to what kind of groupings of clubs would be or groupings of athletics. Also, some increase to the base number that is would be paid. So instead of 3,000, for instance, we might be paying $4,000 as that base for for varsity and junior varsity sports. And then there are some other new conversations that enter into this from a budgeting standpoint that I would prefer to have Heather Lindstad, you know, discuss and talk to you about. I'm very excited about some different approaches that we're looking to try out for this year. And the nice thing is we can do something for a year and then we look at it. And I believe it was Charlie who mentioned as we we were going to need to do this year after year and that the budget season is a good time to have that conversation to make sure that we are staying current. So I'd turn it over to Heather, if that's okay. And was wait for a microphone? Yep. You won't hear the microphone volume here. They'll hear it online.
Okay, thank you. Yes, and looking at this, this isn't just coming from coaches. It was also coming from advisors. There's been longevity in a lot of our coaches and advisors and at some point every every activity or sport kind of got to their their point where, you know, that an advisor was doing a terrific job. So in in the way that it's kind of framed, it it gives incentives for advisors, coaches to to expand their 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 team and or activity. Build up numbers, create an opportunity for for students to feel comfortable in their sport activity and want to do it on a yearly basis and stay with it. Big for us is retention. Of course, we've had the policy for a long time now or since I've been here about about not cutting students and giving them the opportunity, especially at the middle school. And we'd like the same always to happen at the grade schools and making sure that the the students can continue to develop as they develop academically. So in these kind of things and in the committee that was kind of put together of giving you numbers and the numbers also reflect what other schools that we're competing against in sports, but not only sports in activities. So we really want to retain our advisors that do a lot of stuff with our students as far as student council, class advisors and those kind of things. We want to retain them and give them the opportunity to to build those kind of things and those relationships because it's obviously a huge thing for the school. So in that, the numbers again where we've increased do reflect what what we have around us and schools that we're competing for, not just in athletics, but also in clubs and activities. Some of the different things, like I said, would be the longevity of advisors. So that would be looked at every year in giving them an increase while advisors, it's never been. So if an advisor has been here doing the same club for 12 years, they've never gotten increased, which that's not that's not the way things should be as for any teacher. Every year that you should see some kind of bump and they haven't seen that. And same thing. We did have it, but we have some reasons for extended seasons. We changed that for coaches as far as extended season to not just get into the playoffs there. So I am limiting that seventy percent can make the playoffs. And when you're making the playoffs, just in a prelim round and you're four and 10, we're not really sure if we've really developed that team and had the success that the team is looking for. So we've adjusted that to an extended season. And extending the season really would be getting us into the quarterfinals or moving into the semifinals and finals. We've also added something that I think is important for for athletics, and that is sportsmanship. We've got to create the right culture and we want the Conet culture to be seen. We all know that athletics is out out front and it's representing CMHS all the time. And probably that's where you get into the most trouble. They don't always see the great things that are happening in the school, but they might see it out on the field or in on a court and whatnot. And we have to rely on our coaches to make sure that that's happening. Now, everybody across the country is having problems and we're not retaining referees and officials. But I think if we create the right environment and our coaches know that that's the environment that they want for our student athletes, that we're obviously building the Conet name to what we want, not only academically, but with our advisors and with athletics. So that's a different change that we've not had. That would be all of our coaches from the JV assistant coaches and everybody would would see that because this is going to be a community effort in within athletics to to make that and and make Conet great and be seen amongst our peers and everybody that we compete in in Division three and where we're at. So those are kind of some of the changes. Again, I think when advisors see it and how they can take a club from maybe just a six to eight week program, grow it, I think that that will give them incentives. I also think it will give our students incentives. I've heard from from teachers and advisors and the principals of of how after-school programs. And I think that that this will drive our advisors as well. We've seen it a lot with middle school and high school with advisors taking their clubs, starting it for six to eight weeks to making it a year-long process. And again, we've talked about the after-school, but if we have clubs here that are going year-round too, it obviously gives those students a sense of pride and somewhere to be after school.
Thank you, Heather. And I'll just have a comment that I appreciated the comment that and to let the rest of the board know. I'd say we had a few meetings about that and we spent I don't know about most of the time, but a good deal of time talking about that sportsmanship. Right? I think we're all in agreement to the basic, you know, as Ruben said, we need to increase, but I don't know. It was it was certainly noted that there's room for improvement with at least how Conan is perceived by our peers in the area of sportsmanship. For the board and administration to be able to do something, you know, positive to encourage some improvement in that area in that changing the culture, right? We don't know if it'll work, but I think it's the right message to send to try to develop that culture around sportsmanship and reward that. Because it certainly doesn't look good to see like a list of schools with Conan, you know, towards the bottom. That's not where we should be certainly. So I think that's it's an important part of it. Financially, right? It doesn't make up the the biggest portion, but I think it's significant and sends the right message to our our coaches.
And I like the collaborative nature of it. The whole season, all the coaches, all the teams have to work together and work and hold each other accountable for working with their families and their their fans and certainly the the decorum on the field itself and with the coaches and how they are communicating and presenting themselves as well. So this is all very important to I think the Jaffrey Ridge Cooperative School District in general from pre-K all the way through 12, but certainly as it shines a spotlight on this school right here. And we want to make sure that we are competing at the very highest level and doing so with class.
Anybody from the board have any questions? Yeah, Charlie. Oh, yeah, I just want to make sure I understand. So when I add all these numbers up, I got one hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. And that goes in your budget, right? She that goes in her.
Yes, so.
So when you budget for next year, we're talking about some incremental amount on top of that. And also, does that include the bonuses? I don't see the bonuses in there for.
No, they're just the obviously because we don't know that if they're going to retain them.
I'm sorry?
I didn't put them in there as far as because we don't know if they're going to to obtain them. No, I did not.
But if we take all the coaches and they get the top half, all right, now what's that? Hundred and twenty-five bucks, something like that? All right, what's that amount going to be? And then if we get in the top five, what is that amount going to be? Because that needs to be in that budget too.
Yeah. So I estimated just from, and I did not do a careful analysis of this. But when we talked about this with a two fifty, assuming the top five, not the top half, about $4,000 per trimester or because there's three seasons. And so about 12, maybe 15,000, if you're considering also benefits as well with that, like for instance, well, it wouldn't be New Hampshire retirement, but FICA, those sorts of things. The so you'd have the one sixty-five, another, you know, fifteen thousand on top of that.
Seventy-nine.
Yeah, so about one eighty, one hundred eighty thousand, which was a little bit less actually than what we had anticipated. But originally, we were going to raise the base. We did see through the data that it was like a thirty-three percent increase from 3,000 to 4,000 and that some of the activities that we did did not require us to have to increase those after categorizing them into ABs and Cs. And Heather has more to say.
So so that is correct. So we did not go it as high as the thirty-three percent on any of the increases for advisors and or coaches so that we would have the the money. And Ruben is correct. It's a it averages about just under 4,000 per season for the three seasons. So it's around 12,000 if they hit the highest amount and and we achieve the top five and every coach gets the two hundred and fifty. Yep. The other thing is on the increases, they were already in Charlie, as far as making to the quarterfinals, coaches were already built in with that matrix of already getting that one. So now that it should average out about the same if every coach reaches that too. But we've taken that off their base pay.
So we're talking about a thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar increase from what we've done before.
Correct.
Yeah. And
Which also hadn't been updated in
Which.
nine years.
Yeah. And so we we feel good about that. The board usually asked, where is this coming from? The board made a decision at the in the last fiscal year to purchase. It's not really a purchase, but to prepay the retirement stipends that were to the individuals that they had had from the JREA who had been serving here for many years and had you know, been able to kind of have their sick sick time buyout. I think we call it something different, but that's basically what it is. And so that all came to with benefits about $115,000. And so that was prepaid out of last year's budget, giving us this would be part of what we, you know, did that for right here.
Yeah, you're talking incremental increase. No, I'm talking incremental increase.
Yes. I mean, the the
From a budget perspective.
From a budget perspective. Yes, we had it already, but that's also a tangible place where the money is. So you because it wasn't, this wasn't budgeted. But we were able to.
Some of it was budgeted.
Yes, the the hundred fifty thousand was budgeted already. So the the rest of it, that the increase was not budgeted.
Anybody have any more questions or comments regarding this?
Well, I just think it's clarifying. I've always heard about this mysterious matrix that's used to figure out what coaches and advisors get paid. So it's it's good to sort of hear more about that matrix and to see some of the information in front of me. And I I'm sure this was a lot of work and I appreciate everybody who was involved in this. It's a good product.
And we utilized that matrix to help with some of this, you know, we didn't throw, we didn't want to throw away the good work that had been done before. It served us well for nine years, confusing at times, but it's pretty impressive that in one way, budget-wise, from a budget standpoint only, that we were able to keep the budget flat you know, and make great gains, quite frankly, across the district for for the last nine years. But it was definitely time and it was and it was overdue. Well, I'm really happy with the product that we have so far and we are going to look at this annually.
Good. Very good. Would somebody like to make motion? Or continue the discussion?
I would like to make a motion to, are we accepting the stipend salary structure?
That's what we would like.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the stipend salary structure as presented.
Thank you, John. Any further discussion? Not we'll bring it to a vote. All those in favor of accepting the stipend salary structure? Please say that three times fast. Stipend salary structure, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? That passes six to zero zero. I feel kind of bad because it's R I P for the matrix that we spent a long time putting together.
It's it's still living in there. Yeah, there's a lot of it left in there. Yes, it helped. That matrix helped us to define and actually categorize and just make clearer. So it was used.
Very good. Shall we move on to handbooks?
If I could ask, now that Ruben brought that up, there are two policies that really should be actually, there's numerous policies we have to address with this, but there's, let's do the two policies that do need to be approved before before the handbook, let's do the food and the cellphone, Charlie.
What's that?
Before we do the handbooks, let's do the food and the cellphone just to have it clear.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Actually, you know what? We have to do all the policies. There's too many. Okay. Sorry. Let's do policy first. That's okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
Okay.
Yours.
Yeah, because that will. Yeah, okay. First policy is up for a second reading. It is the cellphone personal technology device. There have been numerous edits to this. And we requested admin come and speak to how they want, how they see the ability to implement restrictions on cellphone use at all grade levels, actually. So I'm grateful that you're here because we need you know, input on that. So So um, our original policy said, oh, very outdated information. It was last updated two thousand and five. Um, and so this uh, there are recommendations from uh, the New Hampshire School Board Association that we brought forward and that involves either loosening restrictions or greater restrictions. And we needed admin input, so I'm gonna give it over to the admin for input, please.
Um, so we, and the admin team looked at the agenda, the, the policy that was proposed by the school board um, and spent some time having some pretty lengthy conversation about not only how would we enforce such a policy, but also really sort of what is our big district-wide goal? And, and, and what do we want our practice to be? Um, and I think the thing that came to the surface pretty quickly is that having a policy that um, has one set of rules and expectations for, or practices for one group and another for a different group um, would actually make implementing the policy um, more difficult. Um, from, from not only a school perspective here, because Conan Middle High School is two schools in one, so it's two parts of a policy in one building, which is really tricky. Um, but then also with having families really understand what our belief and philosophy is around uh, cellular technology and then also they have younger learners at home and they can't bring them, but then their older learners can and, and it can get a little bit, a little bit confusing pretty quickly for, for all the stakeholders involved. So we would like to propose that we have a policy that is one policy, one set of um, expectations and procedures that goes pre K, okay, um, through twelfth grade. Um, so that our practices and our procedures are going to be much more simple and easy to implement. Um, if we're all speaking from the same lens, so it doesn't matter if I, if it's somebody at the elementary school or it's middle or high school, same with staff, and it's easier for us to communicate with our staff. And as they're often the ones on the frontline implementing policy like this, um, that it is consistent across the district. It's easier to have one, one voice than having different voices with different people. Uh, David, do you want to speak to that?
So one of the things that um, is tricky, in addition to what Nikki was just saying about cellphones in this particular grade span in this building, is the propensity that they have in the building to be distracting to education and not just from kids using them, but from the damage that can be done from them using them in highly inappropriate ways. Uh, we've had a, a large increase in cyberbullying incidents the last two years. We've been very clear about that. And an uncomfortable amount of these incidents originate from footage or things done in the school building. Taking pictures of somebody in a classroom was one example and posting them and then subversively doing this over and over again on supposed cellphone breaks, for example, um, taking pictures of teachers. In one instance, even kind of flash bombing a teacher. And these are obviously behaviors that we address for that behavior itself. But when the policy allows gray area or permissiveness to something that doesn't have clear educational value, it creates a barrier to us being able to then keep that something under control and at bay within the school. If we did not have one-to-one devices, I would feel differently, but we do. And our school does a very nice job of providing, thanks to the, the board and the community, Chromebooks. We have appropriate laptops for STEM and art. We have digital cameras for our photography class. There really is not a good scenario where personal cellphones are needed in this environment. And already we've implemented, because the old policy, as Lisa said, was very draconian. It said beepers, cellphones and other devices are not permitted in the building at all. Obviously, nobody's had a beeper for a long time, but the, the blanket lack of permission for cellphones made, made writing procedures easy. If we went to a situation where we're saying, in this type of situation, yes, and this type of situation, no, it would actually diminish our ability to keep them out of the classroom. So the administration proposed a slight revision to the policy, um, which Ruben is projecting here. We had shared it a couple of weeks ago. It's the same type of um, idea as what was put forth, but really with a blanket expectation that during the school day, devices are not used. The one exception being in the high school, juniors and seniors during open periods could use them in the cafeteria. And then at lunches in the high school, they could be used in the cafeteria. I don't see any value as an educator to have these any other place in this building, despite the age level of our learners. So um, that's kind of what we're proposing is a, a one-size-fits-all, general, not allowed during the school day with that one exception, high school, um, during those open times.
How will this information be disseminated?
Um, so one thing that I do every August is send out a letter to families that has the handbook links in it, once they've been approved. Kind of the welcome back timeline, what the first day of school looks like. Sometimes I'll highlight athletics or signups for that. Um, usually the annual update, I would have a section on this as it's, it's actually not that far of a revision from our current expectation. They're already not allowed in the middle school during the day at all, and they're not allowed in classrooms in the high school at all. So this would be extending that to say they're not allowed in bathrooms anymore and not allowed in the hallways or library or things like that. Um, cellphones frankly should not be in bathrooms anyways. We did have a cyberbullying incident this year of somebody having a photo taken in the bathroom. But this would be extending what is already a classroom ban into the other kind of common areas with the exception of the cafeteria. So we would communicate that in our August letter and as well as at the beginning of year assembly and things like that with kids.
I would like to ask you also have signage in all hallways.
Mm-hmm.
I would like you to have signage.
Sure.
How will staff be supported in implementing this?
Well, so like I said, it's already being implemented in their classrooms. So the biggest thing right now, when there's an issue, the teachers typically have in the middle school, they call them like phone jails, like a monopoly. There's a little picture of the guy on there and they've got a spot where kids put them if they have had them out. Very rarely do kids need that, but sometimes they do. Um, if it progresses beyond that, we started implementing a very clear step, uh, system of steps for discipline where the first incident, the phone was taken away, the learner could come get it back at the end of the day. The second incident, there was a consequence, as in addition to having their phone taken away. The third incident, uh, parents had to come and pick up the cellphones, which was highly effective. Some parents said, leave it in the safe. I don't want to see it. I'll come get it in a week. But we, we had a lot of support from families on the instances where it got that far. Honestly, it really is not as big of an issue since we've been so clear with the classrooms. There are few, I could count on one hand, the number of kids who've got to that third tier enough times that I, I would know who they are. Uh, but we would continue to support teachers in that way by being there to um, deal with those learners, apply discipline and speak to their parents to get support for teachers if they're having issues with that.
Did you have staff who were of a mindset that this wasn't as important? That they were lenient and needed discipline against, like, did you have staff saying this isn't that big a deal? Go ahead and have them?
No, I mean, our, our move towards a harsher kind of view on cellphones was actually staff-driven two school years ago, about halfway through the year. They had kind of had enough because coming out of COVID, there was a lot of issues with kids and devices, a lot of bad habits had formed. So our staff had a meeting, it was December, January timeframe, and actually they requested and we had a lot of processing on how to have a classroom ban at the high school level. And not every teacher is great a hundred percent of the time with this policy. That's, that's true with every policy. Some of them need additional or additional tools, but the staff have been very clear that keeping these out of their rooms and out of the learning environment is important to them.
How will substitutes have this information given to them so that they can know and not be?
In the handy dandy substitute handbook for um, one place. But we also typically will check in with them. There's a buddy teacher next door who will check in with them. Again, it's not perfect, because every sub, they might come in here for one day and be in RMS for three days. It's a completely different kind of whirlwind when they come in, but we do try to make sure we remind them of those things when, when they're here.
Although that is nice that there's consistency throughout the entire district, which I know is something we're trying to do with a lot of things.
Absolutely.
I think it also helps convey the message. Sometimes we have subs who come in who can sometimes also be on their cellphones. So I think it also sends a message to our adult community that we are here for the purpose of learning and that um, our cellphones can be a distraction to us as well. And it's time to put them away and, and put them aside and focus on the students and the learning that's happening in the schools. And in terms of how would we implement this at the elementary schools, we're pretty fortunate that it's mostly a moot point. Um, very few learners have cellphones. Unfortunately, they're getting them younger and younger. Um, but we tend to, I can think um, with one finger, how many, maybe two? How many conversations I had about cellphones at, um, RMS last year, it's pretty limited. And students are still young enough that while they may have them, it doesn't occur to them to, to take them out at school. Um, some students will have them, they'll keep them in their backpacks because they get home and they're the only person at home or. Um, but in terms of enforcing a policy like this at the elementary school, we're pretty fortunate still that it's still um, really easy and it's, like I said, a moot point. Hopefully we can continue down that path.
I guess, I'm sorry, go ahead. Uh, uh, let me do one more. Let me just, sorry, um, to build on that, that's all. Um, I guess I would also ask that rather than just a manual, um, that it also be a verbal with substitutes, but also with student teachers, methods students, um, a lot of college students come in and it's just not even on their radar not to use them. So I would ask this to be a verbal um, as well for, for anybody who's not at your district meeting. You know, if I could ask that, okay, thank you.
Yes, the other electronic devices, that's gonna cover the earbuds and earphones?
Correct, yeah. I mean, we, uh, at relatively inexpensive cost. I'll get to those in one second. At relatively inexpensive cost, we've been slowly purchasing classroom sets of headphones that are like a dollar per set. Uh, but you know, whenever teachers are saying, hey, I would like to have some headphones, we've been purchasing those when there's quiet music time. They plug them into their Chromebook, you can access the music apps on the Chromebook, but in a much safer way than kids just going on YouTube on their phones and things like that. So the AirPods are actually as much of a concern for the acad- the academic process as the cellphones. And so we started getting in the process this year of being really clear with learners that headphones need to go away. And when you're sitting in an assembly or a meeting and you've got AirPods in your, your ears, it's not a good life skill to building kids anyway to, to be permissive with that. And that's something we've been working on as well.
Okay.
The smartwatches, that's difficult. I mean, now you're gonna be looking at every time a kid has their wrist out. I think what we've done with mostly middle schoolers up to this point is when we see them engaging with that tool on their wrist, then we'll ask them to put it away. But if they're just sitting there with their watch and they're not doing anything with it, you know, it's the same thing as if they had a calculator on their watch or something. We're not gonna necessarily look for that, but if they're using it in an appropriate way and drawing attention to it, absolutely, we would enforce the policy and say you can't be using that during the day. My favorite excuse is that I need to check the time. However, we have beautiful clocks in all of our classrooms that actually work and are synchronized, so that even that piece has really gone away at this point. There just really isn't a good value.
So I brought this discussion to some parents that I knew who have children in sports, cause um, it's been a while since I've had a kid who played in school sports. So I said, you know, how often do you get, when, when this practice or game is delayed or canceled? What's that communication like? Because it had been, without a doubt, way back when my kids were doing school sports, that the coach would text a kid and the kid would spread that out through texting and then I would get the message. It's just the way it was. So I, I heard that there's a huge improvement that um, a sports U app. Very popular. Parents really like that, find it very effective communication, that there's some coaches who use that very well. Um, and then I guess other coaches use email, which works just as well. Um, there was a little bit of concern that the information about cancellation get out as quickly as possible so that kids can get on the bus or make arrangements home. That was a little bit of a, a concern, you know, if, how to make that communication happen. So, so there was a little bit of concern about that. That being said, every parent I spoke with was like, thank you. Let's just figure out, make sure the communication is seamless, but otherwise, thank you for doing this.
So again, when anything's canceled, obviously we use the monitors for, for the students to, to, to see, um, and we highlight that. But also the Sports U app, uh, we made it so that they can bring it up on their Chromebooks too, right? So they don't need their phones or anything like that. They can be alerted through their Chromebooks um, as well, so they, they know that. Um, and again, and then I do try to make sure that through family ID, I alert parents and those kind of things. But the students are alerted by their coaches and or myself through the Sports U and as well as on the monitors so that any kind of cancellations, and then I always send out something through family ID for everybody. But the coaches have done a good job using the Sports U app too.
And that's also the, the process for non-sport activities, like if drama is canceled or?
Correct. So I'm getting all of the, I, I think everybody is starting to use it. I know that like even National Honor Society and the other clubs and activities are using the Sports U app, cause it's just convenient again. Um, so they're not texting, cause we want to eliminate all texting from coaches and advisors, right? Uh, so we're trying to do that. And again, yes, all the clubs and things that are canceled are up on the monitor. Um, if it's a last minute athletic thing, you know, we even use the alarm to really catch people's attention. But we tried, we tried to avoid that too, in interfering with classrooms, but uh, that is how we do it. But for the most part, all the advisors and all the coaches are using the Sports U so that we don't have to use cellphones. And again, they can access it. Uh, we made it so that they could access it on their Chromebooks.
Awesome. Thank you. So is this policy is up for second reading tonight, even though it was amended a bit? I would ask the board to approve it, so it can be placed in the student handbook and you'll put this policy in verbatim, correct? Like.
So this policy right here that I have up, I'm just clarifying. This is the one that, um, David, this is the most recent one.
This was the administration, administration for the district's um, kind of revision and proposal to the, back to the board. So we had received the initial draft and been asked to provide a kind of our, our take on what would be most effective for the schools. And so what's projected is our attempt at a rewrite that would satisfy what we thought was best for the schools as well as the intention of what we got from the policy from the, uh, but the policy.
So what I think I hear you saying, Lisa, is to put this one for record purposes into the second reading of this, like tomorrow, for instance, put, put this item in there, yes. Okay, let me just write that down.
So this is for, this is combined of the two that were in our agenda. Yeah, just detail, yeah. So that is my recommendation or my motion.
To, to approve this one.
To approve the amended on the screen, yes.
And to answer the question about whether the verbatim language for this is in the handbook, I didn't, at, at least in our handbook, I didn't place this exact language because I wasn't sure what policy would be approved. So I approved, I put in language that based on the two thousand and five policy, that basically is this, but it's, it's like handbook language. So I can, I can revise it for sure.
Please do. Um, our policy database is not um, accurate, so please do.
Yeah.
Put that there, cause just saying that it referred to this is not gonna help anyway. Thank you.
So what was the motion, Lisa?
The motion is to move forward with the policy J I C J as amended.
Alright, and I think we have a second on that. Sandy, any further discussion?
I already seconded it.
We're already, multiple seconds here.
Motion was made and seconded, alright.
Yeah. And Charlie, Charlie seconded it, right?
Yes. Well, it sounds like we're ready to vote then. All those in favor of approving uh, policy J I C J as amended? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, abstentions, please approve.
It will be interesting to see if we get any student reps and how, what their take up is on this policy. I look forward to hearing your input. The next policy that we, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Nope, it's fine. Let's go to the next policy.
Talk louder, I'll just talk over you. Alright, um, next policy is EFAA, a meal charging policy written by the New Hampshire School Board Association. Um, this is a long written policy that if we adopt this tonight, supports what we approved as far as meal pricing and our, our, um, the initiatives that we currently do, heard from the food service that they are implementing. So this will hopefully align the districts, the schools and the food service and parents into, everybody knows here's, here is what to do with paying for food. Um, so it, it's, the policy is very long and the actual piece that needs to be added is further down in the New Hampshire School Board Association policy. There's a lot of, here's what it's about, here's why you write it, that's what we're looking at right now. And so if you go down even further, you will get to right there, up, up a little bit. Up a little bit, right there. EFAA, school lunch program, meal charges. And so there's pieces of this that the office, when they put this in, are going to need to address specifically. And so there's pieces of this that the office, when they put this in, are going to need to address specifically. They're simply gonna put in, they don't need to put in prices in this. Um but you'll see, um let's see, was there a um so cash or checks made out to blank, that kind of a thing. All those little dots there. I'm asking the business office to fill in those blanks. Um they if, you know, so the name of the food service company is what I'm asking. So those are the edits that need to be made on it. Um.
Underneath student meal accounts, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, and I'm think that we do checks, but honestly, I'm not positive. I believe we do. That would be, okay, so those things are there, but um I am requesting that we um forego a second reading. I'd like to approve this tonight so that it can get placed in the handbooks and on the website accurately.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone have any questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to um again, like with the cell phone policy, I I think these, there are some really big changes, school, length of the school day for grade schools. Change in meal prices and cell phone policies there. We just need to make sure that those are like independent Facebook posts, frankly.
Yep.
Hey, no. Facebook, at Facebook to your to your public safety publications, yes. You know what I mean? Social media, absolutely. Just just point blank, these are the meal prices. This is, and the policy has changed, and then that can just be a link about, you know, policy has changed about charging and and it can be a link to it, but. Well, this will be what, this will be one of the documents that goes into when you look on the website and go onto food service. This will be one of those main documents. Yeah, I know, but that's not, doesn't mean that someone will read it. I get that.
Yeah, I think you're saying with any types of uh change that are significant to the dealings, runnings of the school or significant to parents' everyday lives in this case.
Yeah.
Um that that be communicated, certainly like uh the elementary's times.
Yeah.
Which
Like if they're in arrears, they're gonna get notified every week. And the superintendent, if he decides to, he can take it in small claims court to collect. Those are important things to know.
And we can include some of these in our first district newsletter as well.
Yeah.
Perhaps, you know, at least an overview.
Um three paragraphs to draw your attention to, page six. Uh I'm just gonna read these out loud and that way you can tell me if there needs to be a change in numbers real quick. Should the student's meal account balance fall below zero, a balance statement requesting immediate payment shall be sent to parents no less than once each week. My understanding from the su- food service is that is an automatic electronic message that has been being sent at the elementary level. And we are repairing this so that it's also sent at the middle high school level. Next paragraph, if the student's meal account balance debt grows to fifteen dollars or more, a letter demanding immediate payment shall be sent by US mail to the parent, or the parent shall be contacted by the principal or designee by phone or in person. Where warranted, the principal may arrange a payment schedule to address current meal consumption and or and arrearses while the school continues to provide the student with meals. My understanding is that also is happening, that somebody is contacting the parents if it's at the fifteen dollar levels. Does fifteen sound correct to you, Nikki?
Currently twenty-five dollars. As soon as they get into a negative, as soon as they have a negative account at the elementary level and letter is sent, a paper letter is sent home and with the child. And then at the elementary level, currently, there is no way to go above a twenty-five dollar. Um negative, the low.
Depends which way you look at it.
Yeah.
Okay, so can we keep it at the fifteen and not change it then, since that's not even a?
Well, that would mean that, I mean, currently, even if you go like a dollar thirty-two cents over, you get a letter. So it means that they would not get a letter until that fifteen. Or would they get the mail before that?
No, it's after. So so the first paragraph is should the student's meal account balance fall below zero. A balance statement requesting immediate payment shall be sent to parents no less than once each week.
Yeah, so it's.
Okay, and then it says if a student's meal account balance grows to fifteen dollars. A letters sent home. Or.
Or a phone call.
Or a phone call. Can I ask, what is, what's the price of lunch? I can't remember. I I don't. It's, so is that basically like a week?
Slightly less. I think it's three dollars and fifty cents to elementary school for lunches, I think.
Yeah, there's a lot of changes. So we go.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so if they go a week without paying, then they get a letter. Basically.
No. They shouldn't be paying in advance, and the first time it goes below zero, they get a letter.
Right, well, they get an email or 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 printed piece of paper.
Yeah.
But then they get an official letter. So that's, that's why I'm thinking like. Let's increase it to twenty-five because that's what they already know. But also that gives them more than that week because we're talking about a week in the first paragraph. So let's increase, let's ask them to uh whoever's rewriting this to increase it to twenty-five, thank you, in that paragraph. And then the next paragraph, if the student's meal account debt grows to thirty dollars or more, the parents will be requested to meet with the principal. When appropriate, the principal should explore with the parents whether an application for free or reduced cost meal is warranted. Where extenuating circumstances of financial hardship exist and the family is not eligible for free or reduced cost meals. The district will work with the parents to identify and engage governmental and private charitable resources which are available to assist the family.
With the elementary level, this is a change in practice because a student would not be able to go below a negative twenty-five dollar balance. And they could continue to receive meals. Uh we do not currently have a practice of
Um turning a student child away from getting a meal whether they have a negative balance or not. Um.
Um they, there's no, nothing in here saying that they'll be turned away. The next paragraph, if a student with a negative balance in his or her mail account seeks to purchase a meal with cash or check. Student will be allowed to do so. No requirement that the funds be applied first to the debt. Uh but no, the student would never, like, it says over and over in this that the student never be turned away. It's just what the principal is doing to accumulate, to get the funds or to sleep with the family, is what this one's saying.
Yeah, the second part of that sentence, though, in that last paragraph, it it does say that if a student with a negative balance in it in his or her mail account seeks to purchase a meal with cash or check, the student will be allowed to do so. So students at the elementary school would not be presenting cash or check typically. They would just be in the line and getting their lunch, so I don't know if that piece needs to be addressed.
Doesn't that kind of imply that if they don't, that they can't purchase a meal?
Yes, which is not our current practice. And just for a point of reference, by the end of the school year, uh we were sending about a hundred letters home weekly for negative balance. And again, a negative balance could have been minimal like a dollar, or it could have been up to twenty-five dollars. We were sending about a hundred letters a week.
I still remember, just a quick anecdote, the sixth grade parents meeting here right after the state stopped funding the free lunches. And everyone was was a very full house in that room over there. And it was a great meeting toward the end. One brave parent raised her hand and I can still picture this. She just said very, you know, uh in a meek way. Uh so, you know, what is the story with lunches this year? Is it something that we're going to need to, you know, pay or, you know, basically every everyone's face suddenly kind of was interested because people wanted to know that. And then when David knew, answered that question and he did well to answer that question, I just saw all the eyeballs drop because it's such, it's such a burden to so many paying for these meals. It's tough.
Yes. Um.
It's expensive. I mean, even though you could never go to a a restaurant or a fast food place or anything to get what you're getting here for what you're paying. I mean, in that sense, it's a deal, but daily, it's a, it's it's a lot, yeah.
Especially when you have breakfast in there too.
Yeah.
And while breakfast is not um as widely chosen at RMS. There are a significant number of learners at GGS that participate in the breakfast program. Like maybe a third of the school or more participate in the breakfast program at GGS, so, which I think is like two fifty. So to feed a child two meals a day, it's six dollars. Just thirty dollars a month, a week.
That, one of the things that we did when we raised the prices was make sure to leave the breakfast flat and not not increase that at all, in the hopes that at least that would be a reasonable cost uh for parents and there'd be be some way to get some snack from that as well or something to that I I I know. Um I'm not sure how to move forward. We actually need this policy um before school starts. But it seems like there's enough discrepancy. I don't know. I'm not sure how to move forward.
We do have one more more board meeting um prior to the start of school. Um it wouldn't be putting this all in the handbooks per se, but we can, and we we've adjusted handbooks in the middle of the year. Uh we can send out notices that way if we want to have more time on this.
So the.
That's the other option.
The question is just whether or not but learner who has a negative balance of twenty-five dollars or more, thirty dollars, can continue to get meals. I mean, is that? I'm not sure that's the question. So that that's, I'm not sure that's the reason why I'm hesitating. This is a very big policy. Yeah. Um there's a lot to it, but I feel like it hasn't been, like, is this your first hearing of it? So you don't even have it in front of you, like, you don't even see it. Okay, so I'm not okay, this is a massive.
You can use the cellphones after hours.
Yeah. The principals are the.
For educational purposes.
The principals are the ones who are gonna have to go to the parents and say, this is our policy. So I'm not comfortable putting this forward if we don't have admin input on this policy. Absolutely.
Yes, but I do think that Christine's concerns should be our concern too. You know, are we moving towards telling students that have balances that they shouldn't come up and get meal?
I don't think so. I don't think that's right. Lisa said that that. Lisa heard.
No, and legally, we can't.
No, I didn't hear Lisa say that, but I'm just wondering if if that's the effect of what we're doing.
I don't think that we turn any kids away, but we just need to be more on top of they need to pay for the lunch. You know, you don't go to McDonald's and say, well, I'd like my food, but I don't have any money and leave. There's gotta be some responsibility for by the parents that you're sending your kid in, you want hot lunches, that's great, and if you can't afford it or it doesn't work for you, or the kids don't like the food, then pack them a lunch and send it with them. There has to be some responsibility from parents too. But I don't want a kid turned away from eating either.
No, and we don't want to turn them away officially. But we also, I think, need to be cautious about the atmosphere we create that
Right.
discourages them. And I I do agree with you, you know, you can't go to a restaurant and say, I wanna be fed, but I don't have money. I I mean, you can, but you're not gonna.
You're not gonna get fed.
Right, but is that true in a school? When I look at how much we spend on education in a typical week, our budget being what it is, we're spending seven hundred thousand dollars a week on educating our kids throughout the district. These school lunch amounts are fairly small, really. And we're, and in a way, the lunch period is the least expensive part of the day, if you think about the costs. Now, does that mean we should therefore throw up our hands and let them take food without paying? No, I guess I'm not saying that, but I think we need to be thoughtful about the impact on families who are dysfunctional or who've got, you know, problems that we don't understand and they're not bringing food home to make lunches. But I think though, John, the policy addresses that, talks to those circumstances. I think what the issue is about the policy is, wh- where do we stand relative to students paying for their lunches, period? Okay, and this is our policy. Now, part of that policy says, if you can't afford it, full price, you should be applying for free reduced lunch. As a parent, you should be doing that. If you're not, you know, why? I mean, there's, that's the whole idea of having a policy in place. And various scratch their hair and saying, look, now we've got, why even bother to ask people to pay for their lunch if we're not gonna collect it? We're just gonna let them, you know, accumulate over the entire school year. So I think it's, it's not a matter of of what what happens when a student doesn't have enough money. They should walk through the line, get their food, no big deal. The issue should be one of between the parent and the school district. And I think that's what the policy addresses is between the parent and the school district, as opposed to making it the burden on the student. And I agree with you. I mean, it should be transparent as to whether the students uh uh meals are paid up to date or not. That should be transparent in the cafeteria. But it shouldn't be trans- transparent between the district and the parents.
So to clarify some of this. The board has approved the food prices and heard from the food services, the process that they are in. What we are trying to do is make sure that our policies are aligning to best practice in facilitating every student getting food and they, and legally, we cannot refuse. What we're trying to do is a way to be able to make sure that parents see the funds that are still owed and the options they have. Now, I'm really grateful, Nikki, that you came. I did not know that you were sending, like, are you ser- like, by mail, they're sending letters? So we're paying for stamps. Like, literally, that's what I'm asking, right?
No, that's a really good question. I'm really thankful that we're not, because we did not budget for that many stamps. Uh no, we typically, we've been, our practice at the grade school too is that their letters are printed, they're folded and stapled, and then they are sent home with the learner to the family.
Okay.
Do you get much of a response?
Um from some families, yes, we get a response and the the balance is paid, or uh there have been situations where they'll get the letter and say, and and this has happened, we we have a learner or learners at RMS who would never have school lunch for a variety of reasons. Um and it's it's clear and evident that this, that children would not, and somehow they get a negative balance because of a mischarge or so we hear from parents regularly about uh mischarges on their students' accounts and that we then follow up and and correct or clarify or fix. Um but if, I would say by the end of the year, we're consistently sending a hundred letters home. Um so they're not, I I would say from that, they're not getting that much traction. Uh but again, it could be anything from sixty cents for a milk that is the negative balance, all the way up to twenty-five dollars. But we are not currently paying for postage, but we are, it is one of the office staff who is preparing those letters weekly. Folding them, getting them to the right learners. So it's it's a significant um time. Burden every week to to do that work as well. So I really appreciate being able to send them electronically via email. I think that would be a great place to start.
Yeah.
Um and then, you know, look at the rest of the policy for, at what point do do further letters or further action need to be taken?
This policy is for tonight for first reading. I was gonna ask it to be just for to, you know, vote on it tonight, but we just can't. I I don't feel like we're ready to do it. Um I would like to have, ask the admin to go back and redline this, look through it and see um what needs to be um in both what the common practice is now at each of the schools, but also strike off the mail, get the email, please, you know, that's you know, it's it's gonna be as effectual and it'll be faster getting to the students and because some of those, some of those overcharges might be because of timing. You know, so, yeah, I You know, so, yeah, I would highly recommend just doing emails, but, you know, at least for the first things. Um, but would you guys please go back and redline and just? You could just email it back. You don't have to come and present if you don't want. I mean, it's probably just gonna be numbers. Charlie?
Yeah, I'd like also see um the business office come back. With their input as well, because part of the reason we're doing this is for clarity for the business office.
Could I ask a quick question? Because the currently, I don't have any much to provide on the current process. Because charging is not allowed at the middle and high school currently. So we inherit a lot of balances for incoming sixth graders, but that's pretty much the extent of my interaction with the current system. That uh what I'm reading here is that this would allow for charging at the middle and high school. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay.
Should have been happening. You guys were following a policy that was actually changed.
Yeah, I mean.
It's like there's some issues with with the policy database.
Understood. And I I was just always told by the lunch program that we don't do charging here. So that's, this will be good clarification. So thank you.
So no, it wasn't, and it no fault. It's just.
Yep.
This is trying to clean up uh a lot. So hopefully, but so yeah, please come back with recommendations. That'd be great.
Understood.
To go on to po- can I keep going on policy then?
Absolutely.
Thanks. Good sports, everybody. Title nine is the next one on the sheet. Do we want to do the, that has to be in the handbooks, correct? We need this for now for handbooks.
We probably don't need to do. Every aspect of it for the handbooks.
Okay.
Um, in title nine, there have been some changes, uh largely for our purposes within how we investigate. Which has actually improved our capacity to investigate in a more efficient manner. But we've got to go do some training as well. So there's a couple of training sessions early on in the year that we need to do.
Okay, in the handbook. Um, to focus on that piece so we can get to the handbooks. Charlie and I did a deep dive into the handbooks to match up. The policies, policy referrals in each of the um student parent handbooks. We didn't get to the staff ones. But um there were a few that before the handbooks are approved, we do need to address. Um, as far as referrals and um I will email you guys. This short list um of things, but. The policies in the title nine. Some of them are, many of them are addressed in the handbook, so we do need to approve the title nine ones.
Right.
To get the accurate ones in the handbook. So it's basically policy AC. And AC AC. And ABA. AC is the big one, AC AC and both of those are in the RMS JGS. CMHS is um AC and. It's ABA.
AC, non discrimination, equal opportunity employment and anti discrimination plan.
Okay, okay. Yep, so basically, we need to approve AC and AC AC. And what we're opening now for public knowledge is uh we got updated required. Policies from the New Hampshire School Board Association. Um, per federal updates to title nine that took effect August first. And these are required policies. These are not optional policies. Um, and these are required by law. So we are placing these policies up for. Immediately immediate approval to be able to go on the website and in the handbook. We're specifically looking at AC in this policy update and AC AC. Uh, AC is non discrimination, equal opportunity employment and anti discrimination plan. And let me see. AC AC was. Panel nine prohibition of sex discrimination and sex based harassment policy and grievance procedure.
While we're looking at this, I do want to commend our administration in our schools, especially over the past five years. Four or five years. Um, with their unwavering focus on making sure that kids are safe. Uh psychologically safe. Um, as well as physically emotionally safe. Discrimination of any kind, um whether it be based upon. Race, religion, sexual orientation, anything of any, anything, you know, that's gonna be spelled out in these policies. Uh, right here, age, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, race, color. Marital status, family status, disability, religion or national origin. Um, this administration has done an amazing job following up on those. And it has been difficult and we've had to deal with adults as well in our community who have uh not followed these policies, both on the um. Athletic fields and as fans and so forth, as as well as coming into our buildings and being disrespectful to individuals. So um it's a community wide um thing that we concerned that we certainly need to make sure that we stay on top of. There are certainly other conversations that we will need to have as a board arise that come out of some of these.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we approve. Policy AC and policy AC AC for immediate um adoption. In the student handbooks and district website.
Thank you, Lisa.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Sandy. Any further discussions or comments on these two uh policies? Seeing now, uh all those in favor of approving uh. Policy AC and AC AC. As presented here today, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? And abstentions?
Are we considering the rest of them for first reading?
This is not first reading. This is proposing for adoption tonight.
The rest of them. Besides.
AC AC. What did you?
Besides AC and AC AC.
KED, JLDB.
Um, let's wait.
Yeah, okay, that's.
Yeah, let's wait. I just wanted to do handbook ones right now.
Great, yeah, okay.
So should we move back to a handbook review? All right. In that case. Back of the agenda and review. We have the agenda starting with the CMHS handbooks.
How would you like me to proceed with this? Would you like me to show the changes here? Do we have you had the opportunity to go through them and want to make a motion? Um, do we do these one by one? What would you like? What would you prefer us to?
If we could do, yeah, each. One would be great.
Okay. So for those who are watching tonight, if you um would like to. See an overview, you have the first bullet, which is our overview of the changes. We have the learner guardian. Major changes. And then there'll be activities handbook major changes. Uh, we tried, so it's not just the handbooks, it's also a summary of the changes of those. Handbooks that you do not see here this evening that you will see is the district wide handbook, which involves a lot of this. So that will be updated afterwards, along with new title nine language and everything else that that needs to be updated uh when the laws change. Uh, plus the CBA changing is going to change some of that language. And also the little Oriole Center. So the little Oriole Center will have some adjustments, um having to do with allergies, food. Uh clothing and so forth. Those uh families will be provided with information. Um, even if we don't get it uh fully approved in in time for them to start, um just on some. Common, just some basic. Basic items that they'll need to attend to. But you already have approved the pay scale, so that's, that'll go in there as well, so that we're fine to get started with that. So those are a couple of other policies that you'll see later on. Okay, um CMHS parent learner handbook, twenty four, twenty five.
Um, I just have one uh. Edit.
Mm hmm.
This is for the current middle high school.
Yep.
Um, or one question. Pol- policy KI is mentioned on page twelve and it, our policy states that uh. Visitors need to first report to the principal's office. Is that accurate or do visitors report to a main office? Is there a difference?
I mean, the practice is that they report to the main office, but it's kind of the principal's area, I guess. So that's how I've interpreted that, that they have to come to this area of the building first before they're able to go anywhere else. But the prac- they don't come into my office and see me every time.
Yeah, the elementary schools?
That's also consistent at the elementary schools. They check in at uh main office, uh which is part of the administrative office suite.
All right. Expect that as a change in policy next. Okay. Policy IJOC is mentioned. It looks like it's the same as policy ABA. It might be redundant and might, that doesn't need to actually like be removed or something. It's just exactly the same language. It might be something to look at yourselves there. Policy JIC and JIC day, it's CD, excuse me. Both of those are. Referred to on page twenty three. They're the student contact conduct ones and disciplinary measures. Those are policies that we worked on with parent groups last year. And currently in the system, if anybody looked those up, they would still show the two thousand five policy, not the October second policy. So I just, yeah, that's not a change for you guys. It's just knowledge that I really. This needs to be updated before um parents like. It was an important policy that we changed, so I just want that. Recognize that the one that you're referring to isn't what parents see yet. I hope that it gets updated soon. Um, and for you guys, um. For the Kona Middle High School, you mentioned on page fifty policy EEO. There is no such policy. So I would ask you, uh David, to go back and look at what EEO is supposed to be referencing and change that before. Publishing the book. That's on page fifty.
Under Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA. That's what you're referring to, EEO.
I, yeah, I don't know what EEO is, yeah.
Yeah, this, this has been language that's, it's probably the same in all of our handbooks if I had to guess, but. Um, I will find the updated policy that references FERPA and replace that in there for sure.
Okay. And again, the policy we just passed, having to do. Any adjustments because of the. Policy that we just passed, which is the cell phones. My understanding is we don't need to make any adjustments.
Do you want to go to, if you don't mind going to that section?
Page thirty one. I'm that good.
Personal electronic devices? And the highlighted is the changes made from last year. Is that correct?
No, it's just standout.
Okay.
That's just kind of the clarity of of what the actual rule is.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
And then I pulled. Um, if you scroll down just a little bit. Nope, I didn't pull that language out. Yeah, that's it. And this is also on the code of conduct above in terms of what the. Steps are, but we wanted to highlight this particular expectation. There it is.
And Ruben, when, could you go to page twenty three? Cause I actually didn't look through to see if it. The language is matching the two thousand five policy or our policy. I'm assuming it was just generic. But now that I'm seeing these updates.
The cyber bullying.
Yeah, David, where, was this language taken from the two thousand five policy or the current one?
The bullying, cyber bullying is from JICK, which was the, that's the. The changes that didn't significantly alter the definition. They just altered some of the steps of of investigating. So the language should still be consistent. If you're looking for JIC and JICDD, those are further back. Little further back. But yeah, down a little.
Cool, yeah, that's what.
Right there.
Yeah, okay, I did, I did read that and it did look generic. Good. I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
And then we, there's a section that talks about learner due process rights, which I believe I updated appropriately. Um, previously, there had been a lot more appeal steps for basically anything, like getting called into the principal's office. Technically, you could appeal that. But that wasn't really what the policy said. It really only talked about suspensions and things like that, being appealed to all these different steps. So I tried to clarify that language a little bit too. I don't know, I don't remember what page number that was on, but. I think it's in the key changes. There's a page number that references it.
All right, when I email you the, that note about EEO, David. I'm gonna send a PDF of the JIC and JICD that are accurate, because they're not in our system right now. Um, and make sure just you can see in case there's other edits. That you want to do for, because we did, we worked on language a lot. So, you know, that, okay.
Hey, any other questions or comments on the CMHS parent learner handbook? Is the intent that we go through it and approve these? One by one or as a group? How do, how does the board want to proceed? Can we do it one by one or review?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'll make a motion to accept the CMHS handbook uh grouping. For uh in the activities handbook and all of the handbooks as um as amended to add the policy. Changes there.
Okay, so just to be clear, that's, that's all the policies there. Does anybody have any question? Is there a second?
No, second, yeah.
Thanks, Christine. Are there any questions or comments on the, any of the handbooks under uh CMHS?
Were there any um for the activities handbook, were there any specific items that you wanted to highlight?
I mean, I would.
Were different?
The only two handbooks that had significant. The only two handbooks that had significant changes, and that's why they have kind of the change cover sheets, where the learner guardian one. With the change to a more clear code of conduct, which better matches a lot of the, the language in our policies. And this one, the Activities Handbook, which really wasn't, we're not changing anything, we're being clearer. Um, we added a section about fan conduct, because that's been a significant issue for us. Um, and even though. Various policies don't allow you to scream horrible insults at other people's children, it was not clearly spelled out in our handbook and. Unfortunately, that creates a loophole whereby some people then create difficulty with enforcing policies. So we added a spectator fan kind of code of conduct to be really clear about what we will accept. And expect from our fans and what we will not accept and expect from our fans and what the consequences for that will be. And we propose that for most kind of. Violations of that, kind of getting a little bit out of control, it's a redirection, and if it continues leaving the event, and there are some things that are a red line. If you use racist language against a child or anybody else, then we will ask you to leave. If you are unsafe, getting in the face of a referee, we will ask you to leave. If you're screaming at Heather Lindstad because you don't like how the game went, we will ask you to leave, there's things that are just red lines because they're unsafe. So we were very clear about that, it's, you know, here's kind of the first basket of expectation, here's the red lines for parents. We had issues, as we all know, this year with people um purchasing things and then attempting to display them in violation of policy. And so we've put an entire section in about the displaying of items in our facilities. We will follow the policies that are in place, but we clarified what that means. It's going through Heather first, me approving if it's going to go up in facilities, facilities crew putting things up once they're approved. Not people climbing on bleachers, peeling paint off walls or putting things up that are not in line with our policy. Uh, we added a purchasing section because we have struggled with people not going through. The correct channels and then expecting or demanding reimbursement for those things. So we, we're trying to unfortunately react a little bit and being more clear upfront with what these expectations are. Heather does a really nice job already with coaches meetings and parent meetings for athletic contests. Sometimes she has chased the same parents down and had to have phone conferences with them because they don't come to these events. But this is just another way to have it in writing, that's crystal clear. What this looks like for our, our fans and our community. And we're going to be making a big push this year in line with kind of the sportsmanship focus. This is obviously a nationwide problem, and the National Federation of High School Sports has put out some really great material that's free. And we're going to be publishing that into some nice posters to hang up, things to send out uh to the community. Reminders and language we'll be using at our events, and we mirrored the code of conduct up that as well. So we're trying to be really consistent and attack this, this challenge head on, so we can have a bit more positivity at our events and less. Um, unkind and unsafe behavior.
Yeah, and I think it's excellent that you were able to. Leverage some of those outside resources, right, these aren't. These aren't the expectations, well, they are our expectations, but these are a lot, these are the expectations that. Any sporting event, you know, the whole, any high school sporting event in the whole country, in the state of New Hampshire, right, so.
I know it seems strange, but it is a crisis, we're not going to have referees, umpires, I mean, right now. Scheduling is a nightmare to get officials. So if we don't start changing our ways, and again. If you get a reputation, then, then, and they can go somewhere else, then they're going to go there, right? And it's always going to be us trying to, to, to chase officials too, I mean, we really need to, to make sure that. Um, we want our students to play, right, and we want them to play the right way, and we want officials here. And we want the officials to also feel comfortable in our environment and, and what we're creating, so. And, and I, I, I know we have to put these things, and I'm not knocking everything, I mean, you know, we've got. Great student athletes, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing on the field. It's the environment that, that they're playing within that really needs to just change.
And I would just echo that. Reflecting on this year of athletics in particular. I can, I can think of one significant student in issue. That was not actually an adult issue in disguise, almost everything we had to deal with this year was. Adult-centered problems, and that's really not okay. This is about kids, so again, this is just making that clear. That we're protecting the integrity and the opportunity for our learners, and if there's adults who can't act like responsible adults. We will not let that compromise the opportunities for their children. Those are the major changes.
Thank you, alright.
The other handbooks really have very minor edits that, that if any, I mean, it was mostly just clerical updates, there may be policies in those that we had to look at, but. I'm sure you would have caught this, I'm sure you would have caught those for us.
Excellent, yeah, I think it's great, as you said, David, I think we've. You know, people on this board have. Been familiar with all those issues, so that's, so for us to have that in. You know. A handbook now, I'm sure that helps us, that's what we'll see. Uh, going forward, and we're doing it for the right reasons too, it's, it's. Right, we're seeing the impact of it, it's too late, right, we're too late, but better uh. Now than never. Alright, so uh any further comments or questions on the, the CMHS group of handbooks? Did we, I'm not forgetting now, I admit, I've. Gets to this point in the night, I've been up for a long time, did somebody make a motion in second already?
I motioned Sandy seconded.
Excellent, that's both, uh. All those in favor of approving the CMHS Handbooks? All those opposed? Abstentions? That passes six to zero zero, and we will move on. To uh. JGS and RMS, should they be done separately together?
I think that they. I imagine have aligned themselves fairly closely, but I'll let.
Yeah, they're pretty, pretty closely aligned, and there are some small differences between the two, just the way that the. Um, school day work, some of those pieces, but otherwise they're, they're pretty generally. Not mirror images, but pretty close.
Alright, policy wise, we found one, uh again, uh AC and ACAC are both in there. Um, I will, I, I don't know how much you've looked at those, the Title IX thing, but I'm gonna send those to you as well, this is the next one. Please definitely read it. And, you know, just make sure that any generic language that you have aligns. With what we just approved, um Charlie found the policy on page thirty-eight, J B A A is non-existent. Um, we don't have a J B A A and we're not sure what that was referencing to, so if you could look at that and. Figure out which reference that was supposed to be, that'd be lovely.
That's the, that's the student handbook?
This is uh Ringe and JGS both have them, and it was policy on page thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, okay.
And Lisa, you'll send that to us in a list? Was, was that part of the list that you're gonna send to us with the updates?
Uh, that was not, that was as we went through the handbook to look at all the references. We cross-referenced those to make sure that they were up to date, accurate, things that were, were right. And we found that there was no J B A in our system.
Thank you.
You said page thirty?
Uh, page thirty-eight.
J I C F A. ACAC. Which is one that we just approved tonight.
Uh.
J I C K.
Page.
Weapons, weapons in school.
Was it in? Oh, JGS, sorry, JGS.
It was in the JGS one? Yeah, I'll look at JGS.
You're in JGS?
I was, I was in RMS.
Okay.
But it could be different, so whoops, this is not the right one, we want. This is the one we want.
So he's talking about weapons.
Okay. I mean, I think we might have a different.
So does Ringe not have that?
J B A A? Is that the one you're talking about?
That's the one, but so.
Ringe has the AC. AC.
So is this, do you think that was supposed to be?
I, this, I was gonna say that one's, you mean the sexual harassment?
Yeah, I guess.
Yep, so JGS will need to adjust that and put ACAC in, that's the one you did tonight.
Yep. You organized this, buddy, did a good job.
Don't blame me. Alright, would someone like to make a motion? Uh, with regard to the JGS and RMS uh groupings of uh handbooks?
I will make a motion to accept the JGS and RMS. Handbooks for twenty twenty. Twenty-four, twenty-five. As amended. Just wondering.
Yeah, and the JGS, so, we'll just go ahead and read them.
Thank you, Christine. Second, thank you, John. Any further comments or questions?
Just how will this affect, so what will happen with E E F A A, the food service one, is any language? At the next board meeting, when we approve this, how will this look, because we want to make sure that there's no. Confusion. Like, we don't want to have this printed and then have any changes.
When do you print the student handbooks?
We don't, they're shared electronically.
Yeah, so we can just change it electronically.
Best answer ever. Cool.
So it should work out well.
So now I have. Can you print one for Charlie? There you go, Charlie, I'll set.
Ten cents a page.
Okay, I believe we have a. Motion and a second, all those in favor of approving the JGS RMS Handbooks, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? So they are approved.
Great. Thank you, Nikki, for all your time.
Yeah, thanks everyone for coming again.
Input. That's good. Yeah.
Listen to your radio station on the way out. So we're all settled policy, Lisa, right?
No, we need to finish the Title IX.
Okay.
So the remaining Title IX policies need to be approved, again, they um. I think all but one. Was a um required. Um, these are legally required. Um, so I'm gonna recommend that we pass them all now. Before go second reading. Which one is not required, do you remember? I'm looking now, it was a procedure. They said send these separately. There's talk of um Title IX Coordinator at each school, which is something we had talked about before, um.
With a human rights officer, is that something that we currently identify?
We're gonna have to go, once these, yeah, these are approved, we, like, we've had to have, you know, investigators and, and, yeah, so we'll, we'll have to.
All this.
We'll have to.
Updates and are working to comply, I know they just became effective.
Yep, we'll have to um. Have a conversation about who's gonna do.
Okay.
Yep, and then we'll officially have those.
I would be okay. If you are okay, Charlie, with putting these in for a second reading for the next time. We needed to do the handbook ones and get those in place, but how do you feel about that, do you think?
The law says August first, so.
I know.
You can also approve them and bring them back for a second reading with, so that you have, so have them on the books in a sense, that it's approved. You're abiding by the law-ish. You know, four days off, and then um.
Yeah, and that would be good, because there was something I wanted to talk about, I wanted to suggest when we uh go into non-public. So that would be, let's do that, so I motion that we approve. The remaining Title IX policies as offered, policy ACA, ACE, GBAM, IHBCA, JIE, JLDBB. And KED.
Thank you, Lisa.
Alright, I'll second.
Thank you, Christine. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving uh the remaining Title IX policies on tonight's agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Let's see. Alright, that's five to zero to one. Bring back to our agenda. Item number ten is Board Committee Updates. So I guess we'll start down here at this end of the table, Charlie, do you have any uh Board Committee Updates since last time? No, it's an easy one. Christine?
Nope.
Right. I have one, so uh, long overdue, uh but we did have a. Communication uh Committee Update, we hadn't met uh. In a number of months for a number of reasons, but I wanted to be sure uh that we did have a meeting, um. Not everyone was able to attend, it's not school year, so some people were not available, however, uh. We had a productive meeting, just kind of reviewing uh the goals of the Communication Committee, uh where we're currently at. Um, identifying some. Possible new members, we'll seek a student representative, um. Making sure we have a representative from each building, parent and community representative, so we're gonna seek to uh. Continue to build out the membership, it's rather small now, at one time it was much larger, um. So we're gonna seek to improve that, so we get a well-rounded view of the district's communications. So after we discussed kind of the, the current internal workings. We agreed on. Uh, plan going forward to identify these representatives and revisit, I think the last. Where the last committee was at, was seeking to. Have a poll, I know that's always kind of a. May, a bit of a risky thing, but we, we feel like we need input, and I don't think one's been done since twenty nineteen. So a lot has changed since then, certainly in the area of communication, if you look at where, you know. Facebook page, Instagram page, the letters we stay at, send home, uh I think we've made a lot of improvements. Uh, but we also need feedback on. How we're doing there and what can we do to improve, improve those things, so I think that's gonna be our next step. Once we have uh. That full committee uh agreeing on that. So that's my brief introduction uh to the. You know, restart of the Communications Committee.
And, and my understanding Leslie was at that meeting?
Yep, Leslie was at that meeting, she provided a, a lot of great information, certainly. Uh, for the current workings, I know a lot of things have changed and staffing-wise, and really, we're trying to, you know. The goal of the meeting isn't to. The committee isn't to go assign a, a bunch of things, it's to establish some priorities and work with the district in order to accomplish those. One thing we were able to do immediately. Kind of a big believer in some quick wins, right, so we're not just talking and, you know, the purpose of the meeting and having another meeting. Um, but we did identify, uh. Sandy identified a gap where. You know, are, these board meetings and committee meetings aren't published in the newspaper, the Monday Ledger, and that is in fact a free service. Um, and Leslie, I think, implemented that that night, so.
She did.
Um, I think that's great for transparency, right, our meetings are gonna be announced. In as many places as possible, right, so we're just using all avenues. We know that the difficulty it is to get in touch with everybody, we have people say, I don't get the paper, I don't have Facebook, I don't have Instagram. Uh, I don't answer the phone, I don't check my email, right, there's.
Some of them still don't get the district-wide mailings.
Don't get the mailings, right, so I think it's important, I think we agree that. You know. To have as many avenues as possible, and to be as transparent and make as much effort as possible to communicate, I think we're all committed to that as a district. Have you given much thought to a town crier? Be volunteering for the position, Charlie?
We have the bell.
It's very loud.
Little, little intercom on the school buses as they go through, just gonna have a repeated message.
Yeah, so I mean, that, there, there's a lot there in communication, right, so I think when we get the, we really are gonna seek to be focused on maybe, you know. One or two things that we can accomplish uh and focus on, because if we try to kind of. You know, eat the elephant there, we're just gonna end up with meeting after meeting, so I think we'll have a yearly. You know, eat the elephant there, we're just gonna end up with meeting after meeting. So I think we'll have a yearly, you know, list of hopefully no more than three goals and. And try to work towards those. All right, John, passing over to you. Any lack of committee updates?
Well, we did meet on the fifteenth, but there was a school board meeting that night, so I assume that that was. That meeting was discussed, yeah. Uh, so I won't go over that, but there was a uh. Intent or an attempt to get a meeting with the Gale associates, the Gale company, and I think that's still in the works. And uh. The summer schedules, that hasn't happened yet, but hopefully in the next week or so. And also uh. The people from Revision Energies did get back in touch just uh four or five days ago. They're interested in trying to renew communication. They did answer that. In terms of the route two oh two land. They put in a request to P S N H. Regarding the feasibility of doing that. And what they said is that there's uh a long waiting list. Uh, it, it is feasible, but there's a, more than just. Jeffrey Range School District that's uh put in applications or intense or requests. To P S N H, so it'll be a while before they would. Get back to us with anything definitive about their capacity to. Put in solar on our land. And also, I, I think the last time we discussed this, looking at the numbers in terms of the financial benefit. To the school district, it seemed like it was a fairly small financial benefit. And it might not be worth tying up so much of that land for that. However, there is also an interest on the part of Revision and talking with us about. Using the current buildings and putting solar on top of them. And they would like to talk with us and see if we have any interest in that. They would explain what the. Impact that would be and uh. To assure us that they're used to working with schools and that they. Don't think that would do any damage to our. Roof tops or the H V A C units that we've recently installed. Uh, this afternoon, I received an email with some potential dates and I'll share them with. Uh, members of the board. It's made clear that they don't have to come in and meet with us. We can do this by Zoom and make it easier, so. That's the update.
Excellent. Thank you, John. Any questions for John? Any updates, Sandy, Lisa? All right, that completes the board committee updates. Next, it's discussion items. Didn't, we didn't have any scheduled. I don't think we have any here and that brings us to uh the second session of public comments. Then we have no, nobody from the public here. Waiting for our online audience, if anyone. Doesn't look like anybody's chiming in right now. Uh. I didn't have any uh board matter scheduled for tonight's meeting. Uh, we didn't bring anything up, so.
Oh, a board matter?
Yes, yes.
Where do we stand relative to Board Secretary? Cause I know Leslie is. Fully booked and so. It'll be helpful if she, especially with the school year starting up, she's really gonna be.
Mm-hmm.
Uptight with all those systems, so.
We've had some interviews and we are in um the middle of a process right now. Yes, of interviewing.
Of interviewing.
Yeah.
Is that different than what it was two months ago?
Different, so it, it's different in the fact that there's different people that have applied.
Okay. Is there an expectation that we'll have one for school start?
I think that's um. I'll have a better answer by the end of the week. But I think that in looking at the, the paperwork, you know, there's, it's. It's more promising.
Okay.
All right, anything else as far as board matters? The next item. Is a German.
We have to break the bush into a joint.
Could we go to, go to a second?
Yeah, I guess before we do that, is, is there?
Another board matter.
Mm-hmm.
The Romans used to do this instead of voting, we're just doing this thing, you're not at the vote.
What's abstention now?
Abstention is just, yeah.
So uh. Is there a need to go back into non-public tonight? Okay, I'm looking down.
We're, we're gonna look at you. I, I, you know, at the very end of non-public, we already have passed our, your time. I mentioned the case of. Young man from Ringe, he was here on the silo request. Well.
I'll look into that. I don't think we need to go.
This is sound like something we need to do.
I think that. We can um, we can get that answer fairly. We're gonna get that answer this week.
Okay.
Yes, I would like to go into non-public.
Okay. So this has made a motion to go back into non-public.
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Christine. And all the discussion, discussion?
And we, we're, we're going to non-public four.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was the discussion. What are we going?
Let's do reputation.
I think reputation is what I was thinking.
Yep.
Could be, could be pers, it could be a personnel issue as well, personnel reputation, yep.
Okay. Uh. We'll call out and I guess.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, there you go.
Hey. We're in.